Let me call the meeting to order. This is a regularly scheduled Greer City Council meeting called and convened this evening, November 24th, 2020. Having called the meeting to order, I'd like to ask Councilmember Lee Dumas if he would to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, followed by an invocation for council.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this night. We do have so much to be thankful for and so glad that we could be here and that we can all be healthy. And we definitely know there are others out there that are hurting, that are sick, that are ill, and we pray for them right now. And just pray for this nation with all the struggles and the division that we've had. Just hope that we can all come together again soon. Lord, go with us tonight and give us your wisdom, give us your guidance and direction throughout this Thanksgiving season. Be with us and plead God and protect us in all that we do. In Christ's name I pray. Amen.
Ms. Duncan, do we have anyone appear in public form this evening?
No, sir.
Council, with that, we'll move to the minutes of the council meeting held November the 10th. I'll entertain a motion as they be received.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any items of note for the clerk? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Council will move to departmental reports. They're contained in your packet. You have the information there from October 2020. Mr. Mayorman will be glad to help you with any questions you have in regards to that. Ms. Howell joins us this evening for our financial report.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be giving you a brief overview of the general fund tonight for October. So, we collected $924,000 in revenue this month to give us a year-to-date total of $3,405,000. We had total expenditures, operational expenditures of $2,700,000, $700,000, and the fund balance usage was $160,000 to give us a total operating expenditures of $2.9 million for the month, and year-to-date total is $8.9 million of expenditures. You'll refer to the dashboards. Oh, let me say quickly too, that's 2% under budget. So, if you refer to the dashboards where we compare actual benchmarks, we do have a negative overall variance of $227,000. But the cash balance in the general fund account as of October 31st is $8,521,000. So, that's a brief overview of the general fund, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, ma'am. Council? Questions? Comments? Thank you. Appreciate it. Mr. Mayorman, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Susan. Excellent work. A couple of things I want to update you on real quick. The street cut ordinance that was presented to council and subsequently tabled at the last meeting, just letting you know that staff is still working on the request of council to meet with our stakeholders and hammer out some of the finer details of that ordinance to bring back to you for your consideration when the time is right. So, just letting you know that's where we are. Tammy and I were discussing earlier, the employee appreciation breakfast is scheduled for the 11th of December. It will be a little bit modified, as you've come to know it from years past, but we will send you an email with the particulars on that. The only thing we're going to ask is that you just get with Tammy, just let her know that you're coming so we can make some appropriate arrangements, but it's going to be kind of a hybrid model. The tree lighting ceremony is on the 4th next week? Is that right? Yes. Next Friday? And there will be an encore performance of dine on trade. So, it has been successful in October, so they're going to have it again that night. So, if you are interested, get reservations. I want to head to it, and I don't think you can get a table any other way. So, dine on trade and tree lighting on the 4th. And then, of course, with Thanksgiving approaching, Thursday and Friday, the city hall and city offices will be closed. With that, that concludes my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the update, sir. Counsel, let's move to appointments to boards and commissions. We've got a number of them that come before us this evening as we approach the end of the year. The vast majority of these do expire at the end of the year, which only will give us one more meeting in which to fill some of these positions. And otherwise, we'll need to move hastily as we go into the first of the year to get them filled. Before us this evening, the construction board of adjustments and appeals. This is Greg Caruso's term that expires 12/31/2020. Any information from staff regarding Mr. Caruso's service with the city?
Ms. Albert, we spoke with him, and if it's your desire, he would like to continue to serve.
Okay. Counsel, with staff's direction, I'll entertain a motion to reappoint Mr. Greg Caruso for another term on the construction board of adjustments and appeals.
Second.
Any discussion in that regard? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, the elections commission has a board member whose term will expire 12/31/2020. Mr. Paul Lamb has served on that commission for a number of years and done a good job. Certainly, we've not seen quite the excitement at the local level that they have nationally in terms of election commissioners, so hopefully Mr. Lamb will be agreeable to another term. Ms. Duncan, any information in that regard?
Yes, I spoke with Mr. Lamb, and he also would like to continue to serve if it's your desire.
Great. With that, then, it comes with a recommendation from staff. I'll entertain a motion to receive from council.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion in regards to Mr. Lamb's service with the city? Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, a number of folks on the recreation board of trustees, Recreation Association Board of Trustees, come before us this evening. Mr. Arrowood was unable to join us this evening. We'll remind him of that his representative's term expires in District 3. Ms. Harper's term expires 12/31/2020. I don't know if you need to recuse yourself on this one or not, but do you have a recommendation for someone to serve on the recreation board of trustees, Mr. Harper?
I have indeed spoken to Ms. Harper, and she indicates her willingness to continue to serve in this capacity. I believe Ms. Cunningham has spoken to her as well and feels that would be a good fit as well, so I feel like I can have new conscience, make a motion for another term with Ms. Harper.
That comes as a first. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Floor is open for any discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. District 5, Pam Taylor's term expires 12/31/2020. Any information in regards to Ms. Taylor's service?
I do not.
Okay. We'll check on that. Yeah. At large, Mark Metcalf's term expires 12/31/2020. I have talked to Mr. Metcalf. He would appreciate the opportunity to continue to serve. I bring that before the council is the motion to reappoint Mr. Metcalf. Do I have a second in that regard?
Second.
Motion in a second. Floor is open for any discussion or questions. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes. Counsel, the first and only item of new business that we have this evening is the first reading of ordinance number 63-2020. This is an ordinance of the City of Greer, South Carolina, to adopt the Greer Comprehensive Plan, consistent with requirements of South Carolina Local Government Comprehensive Planning Act of 1994. We are joined by Ms. Cotty this evening, our planner, to give us an overview of the final version, as well as information from the planning commission meeting last night. Floor is yours.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Since you were all present at the joint council and planning commission workshop, we are not going to go through in quite as much detail as the consultant did that night, but I do just want to remind you that a key piece of the new comprehensive plan will be the new future land use map. I hope you've taken a chance to check out the link that we sent you and click on some parcels and make sure you're comfortable with those areas. A big change that we do have this year are the character areas. They've changed not so much in location, but we've changed a lot of the descriptions to focus much more on the character of an area, the types of uses that are appropriate, allowing more flexibility than in our current comprehensive plan. And then, we did stick with the kind of centers and corridors that was in our previous plan, as well as the 2015 Community Master Plan. We really used the preferred growth strategy that you all adopted as the foundation for this, and then used our existing future land use map and our zoning map, as well as existing land use, to really come to a conclusion on this portion of the project. Just a reminder, the character areas, we do have communities that are made up of the different housing types, as well as downtown living, manufacturing, and logistics, and mixed employment. We also have those corridors that we mentioned. Again, more focused on the character of the area, suburban, commercial, neighborhood corridor, and transitional corridor. And then, we do have those centers. We did just focus on the neighborhood center. Again, this is to allow more flexibility in more traditionally residential areas, kind of keeping with that node feel and allowing flexibility in terms of land uses. And then, the regional center, again, hasn't changed much from the last go-round. We did combine superregional and regional centers. So, again, I won't go through all of these goals and objectives, because you guys saw this a month ago and you've had the draft for a while, but just, again, as a reminder, there are nine required elements that are part of the plan. With that, we do have an overarching goal for each one, and then between three to five objectives for most, except transportation, which will come as no surprise, has the most. And then, we also have a set of strategies for how to implement those throughout the plan as well. So, in terms of population, again, this is really focusing on accommodating and supporting the growth that we have and the needs of a diverse population. For economic development, the key focus is on job growth, supporting local businesses, while also retaining target industries and a strong local tech space. For natural resources, it's always kind of striking that balance between protecting our environmental and sensitive resources, creating recreational opportunities for our residents and visitors to enjoy, and really connecting the areas with green space and making this a really rich and vibrant city with trails, green space, and active amenities. For cultural resources, continue to celebrate and preserve the rich history, again, really cultivating downtown and what we've done there, and continue that vibrancy throughout the city, really focusing on the identity and giving people opportunities to engage. For community facilities, again, this is really about, you know, our police, our fire, our city hall, all of our infrastructure and facilities, focusing on really maintaining effective public service throughout the community. For housing, definitely focusing on a diversified housing stock throughout the community and really meeting the needs of all incomes, ages, and abilities, and really creating a place that allows residents to age in place and age in community. For the land use element, again, this is really implemented by the future land use map, and really continuing the history that this council and the city has taken with a really balanced development approach. And then, again, as I mentioned, transportation is a very robust element in this plan. It's where we have challenges, but it's where we also have a lot of opportunity. So, this goal really focuses on strategic partnerships, targeted investments, really enhancing our transportation system to meet the needs of our residents, our visitors, and our employers. And our last is the priority investments element, and this one kind of focuses, again, on cultivating strong partnerships and coordinated investments, both in infrastructure and facility projects. And you'll notice a key theme throughout these goals and objectives is partnerships. So, it's really important for us to continue to have strong relationships with both the counties that we are located in, as well as, you know, Greer Development Corporation, our nonprofits, potential opportunities for public and private partnership as we move forward. So, I think that's a really key focus of the plan. And I think one of the biggest overarching things that we heard and things that we've seen throughout these goals is really focusing on infill, which is something that this council has talked about a lot over the last year, and I'm sure even longer than before I was here. So, with that, Brandon and I are both available for questions, comments. Planning Commission, and again, I apologize, they did just hear it last night, so it was not in your memo, but they did recommend approval of the comprehensive plan. Tonight is first reading. There will be a public hearing and then second reading at your January 12th meeting. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions along with Brandon.
Counsel, floor is open for discussion or questions. Ms. Cotty, in our, and I'm trying to pull it back up, it's a little hard on this. In the future land use map, are there areas that are currently identified that are outside of the city limits?
So, the map that you saw, and I'll click on this, because I think it will work, hopefully, The map that you saw in the workshop is more akin to this that you'll see on the screen now. It mimics the borders of the strategic plan. Our actual future land use map that will be adopted is just the area that's currently annexed into the city, but we do have a character area map that shows all of it, so that we have guidance for if we do have infill annexation. So, the plan does have both maps side by side.
Okay. So, I guess the thinking here would be then that potentially, in some regards, the city could look like that, even though in some cases it's probably not practical or maybe even feasible in some regard. This is just sort of a, just sort of a perfect world kind of thing? Is that basically what we're doing?
Yeah. I mean, so it's really, the future land use map really lays the foundation of the vision for what we see the city, what's most appropriate. Again, it is the key tool that the planners and the planning commission use in order to make recommendations when we have rezoning requests or annexation and zone requests. So, that is like the key element that we look to, to see, is this appropriate with the overall vision for the city? So, again, I mean, some of the existing land uses may not line up with the map, although if there have been areas where in 2010, you know, we saw a certain vision and that hasn't come to fruition, we have made those updates.
And I guess part of the reason I ask as well, too, is that, and I don't remember specifically this happening in 2010, but I know in some cases we have had some angst, might be the best way to put it, from residents and special purpose districts and those kinds of things, when they see this map and identify that they are, for lack of a better word, sort of targeted in our growth. And I think we need to be, I don't know that we need to be overtly conscious of that, but I guess we do need to be conscious, I guess, in some regards, because when you start looking at that map in terms of where some of the limits are, we are well into some other established SPDs, as well as probably residential areas that won't come in, because they've got services that they need now.
Sure. Yeah. So, again, the official adopted future land use map will just be city property. However, we did kind of lay out, you know, if we were to grow, this is how we see it going.
I have been looking at others, folks' plans as well, too, and another upstate city, one of the things that they identified was medical centers around where their hospitals were to encourage development related to medical research and medical offices and that sort of thing in those areas. Was there any discussion of that during the planning process?
Yeah. I believe in the community facilities, they do talk about the existing medical facilities that are in the city, and they're identified on a map. It doesn't necessarily lay out strategic goals for development around those areas, but if that's something that council would like to see, we certainly could add that as an objective or in the text of that community facilities.
The only thing that caught my eye specifically about that particular piece of their plan was that they had almost addressed it in an overlay sort of fashion that I assumed would probably carry some sort of incentives or something, and I don't know exactly how that would work. And I don't know that priority-wise, that's something that we would want to jump into immediately, but if it was something that, on the advice of our economic development director and/or others, might be something that we would look to do in either an update to this map at some point in time, or for future maps, it might be wise to keep that in the back of our minds.
Okay. That's certainly something staff can look into and speak with Reno as well.
Okay. Anybody else got anything? We have one more question, if you don't mind.
Of course not. Why wouldn't you?
And this does come from Greenville's plan. Greenville's plan identifies a goal to set aside 30 or 33% of future growth as green space. An ambitious goal, particularly, I think, for us in terms of how fast we are growing and where we're going, but seems to me like would be an objective that at some point in time in the future, again, this may be something that we would want to consider, not necessarily the 30%, but just to set aside in some regards that we would be cognizant of trying to have an obtainable goal in terms of green spaces as we move forward. As we've talked, that could be in the form of recreation space, that could be in the form of just set aside, that could be in a lot of different ways, and I have not dug into their plan enough to fully understand how they intend to achieve that, but I know they've done an excellent job of doing that up to this point, and it appears to be an objective that their council is, likes to see. So, that may be something that we would want to look at in terms of, is there a reasonable goal that we would want to set, or would we want to just take one of our objectives, their natural resources or whatever, and put in there that we just, you know, that we want to try and to reach a point where we get to having a set aside of some kind built in, more specifically than what we do now?
Certainly. I think setting targets would be a great next step. I believe the only target that is specifically called out in the plan is the goal to have residents within a quarter mile of a park or trail, but again, that's not necessarily green space in the same way that you've talked about. The plan doesn't list a lot of specific targets, but again, that is something we could potentially add if council is interested. And we certainly could do that outside of the plan, too, so that it would be a more moving target on a year-to-year basis and have more of like a dashboard that you could track. So, that's certainly something we'd be happy to look into.
Well, as we move forward, and this is something I think our council will talk about as well, too, as we move on into UDO, and we've talked about working with developers and others in terms of potentially looking at future ways of maximizing our ability to be able to work with the developers in the future so that we've both got a good product. That may be something we want to consider.
Definitely. And I mentioned this to Planning Commission last night as well. We spoke about it at the joint workshop, but the comprehensive plan is, you know, the guiding vision, and then we'll be embarking on kind of a 12 to 24-month process with y'all heavily involved, creating a unified development ordinance. And that will really be the teeth, that will be the enforcement mechanism and the way that we can really start to implement some of these things. So, certainly tools and things that could be put into our code, like density bonuses or really shoring up some of our cluster development requirements, could really help make sure we preserve green space. So, we will certainly note that, and then while we're developing the UDO, work with our consultant to see what kind of best practices are around the upstate and around kind of the southern region, and bring those forward for you guys to decide what's right for Greer.
What about the, I was looking at the existing land use, it says that 26% of the existing land is in agriculture. Are those just existing farms that are inside the city right now that are not going to be developed?
I mean, I believe it's, it's the county's take on it, so it's really undeveloped land right now, so it could or couldn't be, depending on, you know, some of our industrial land that we have kind of slated for that is R20 or RS or, you know, large residential tracts. So, I'm not certain how much of that is developable or not, but...
I would suspect that's straight from the tax rolls.
It is.
Yeah, it's their categories.
Many, 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 many people have their land, empty land, zoned agriculture.
Sure. Yeah.
The target parcels taxed as farmland.
Yeah.
It's developed.
Yeah.
And they have to pay the rollback taxes to an extent.
Right. And I was just curious, you know, the differentiation, because if you see that, it says agricultural, it says 26%, and then it says open land, and then undeveloped at 8%, and it's almost like those two could almost be blended, because I almost believe they're kind of the same. You know, again, kind of like if you're targeting open space or whatever, there's existing farms that are out there, whatever, and that was something that we wanted inside the city, then that may be fall in that agricultural category, but I almost think it's kind of like development and waiting.
The difference in categorization probably does have to do with property tax, what it's on the front.
Yeah. And we did use the county, Greenville County's characteristics for existing land use specifically.
The other thing I noticed on here back to kind of, we were talking about... Uh, the other thing I noticed on here, back to kind of, we were talking about targeting or what have you, was, it was going over the amount of senior housing that is inside of the city. I mean, is that something that we actively go out and pursue with developers and tell them that there, there's a need for projects like that inside the city, or is that something that they look at this plan and then they make the decision that they need to break it forward?
I think it could be either. Um, I mean, there are certainly developers that cater to that type of development, that I'm sure are always looking for space and um, willing partners. Um, a lot of times those types of developments are public-private partnerships. Um, I mean, of course, sometimes they're not just, you know, active living communities or um, nursing facilities or the memory care. Um, but often developers that are interested in that type of community may also be interested in low-income housing developments, and again, maybe partnering with nonprofits or be interested in partnering with the city. So I think that's really kind of up to you and, and council and how much you want to pursue that. Um, if we did small area plans, um, you could certainly identify areas where you'd like to see that. Um, right now, they're just kind of listed as land uses that are appropriate in certain centers, um, but not called out in much more detail. So if you're interested, I mean, there, there's certainly, you know, there's density bonuses, but there's also incentives and, and different types of tools you could implement into the code, um, depending on what your highest interest is.
I might, can add some to that too, because I've been involved with Mr. Deaton on a couple of potential projects. That, that market, like multifamily and a lot of other markets, and particularly our commercial development, is driven by demand. And um, while there is certainly a, a, a demand at this point in time, I think what is, is hap, excuse me, happening in some regard, is that because of the amount of multifamily that we're building, the, the amount of town homes, uh, smaller detached homes, that sort of thing, that a lot of that demand is, is, is being met right now. The other thing is, if you look at our demographics, we are, we, we, we certainly demonstrate uh, a, a fair number of, of, of people that are in that age category, but interestingly enough, we are also well below the averages of, of both the area and the state in terms of our median age and um, average age. And what happens, I suppose, in some regards are that people that are looking for, looking to do a facility over, that they're going to recoup money over a long period of time, it's probably not too exciting to them to, to, to see a town that demonstrates a, a preponderance to uh, having a, a younger, younger demographic. So I don't know that we've had as much interest in some regards as we, we may have had in, in the past.
And one other note for diversifying housing stock, um, you know, one other option that we would like to hear more input from council again, as we start to develop that UDO, is where um, council feels like accessory dwelling units might be um, appropriate. So a lot of that is, you know, mother-in-law suites, people who want their parents close by and being able to age in community, but not necessarily in dedicated senior housing. Um, we will definitely be having that conversation in the near future.
I think one of the other things that you're finding is, and is that, that, that population is um, is not as interested in the traditional elderly housing as uh, as, as they used to be. And um, I think what we're finding now is there are still subdivisions that, that cater, particularly with the patio homes and um, detach, uh, small attached homes and town homes, uh, that develop, that certainly fill that need, but there is uh, of the last, probably two projects that, that I was involved in, 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 in terms of talking with, they wanted to be downtown. And that was part of the issue was um, their, their model was that their residents uh, typically wanted to be close enough to, to, to get to the downtown.
Yeah, and that's one of the challenges, if you look at the housing stock, you know, I like how y'all did the, by the decades, uh, what fifty, sixty, seventies, and you can see that a lot of the forties, fifties, sixties, and you know, a lot of the growth in the central part of the city was all kind of, all that land was taken up, and then naturally people just moved out and away. And so that makes it prohibitive when folks want to come in and do those new projects to do it downtown where, exactly where they want to be. And uh, I mean, I guess the only alternative to it is to upfit the existing housing stock or find several together and push those over and, and start over. So um, I think that's the challenge to be in, to be in downtown, when so much of your, your land is already occupied with existing houses.
Certainly.
It may cause us to, to rethink um, some of our height regulations as well too.
Yes, I think that's going to be important to look at in both C1 and the overlay.
Well, yeah, for, for a couple of different reasons, uh, you know, one of the, one of the primary ones though is that the best tax value in a desirable area is typically is, is, is what goes vertical is, as opposed to spreading out. And there are opportunities, while we want to maintain a, a, a particular character for our community, we also need to be cognizant of the fact that there may be places that um, in terms of a mixture of housing types, that it would be appropriate to have um, multiple One last, or at least my last question, uh, from a, uh, this is from a, a, a purely technical point. I know that the state requires uh, that we update the plan in a minimum of ten years, and I think we've been actually doing ours every five. Uh, it is, is ten, um, I, I know, we, we say ten, is ten actually the minimum? Because I noticed that one of the communities around us was doing a twenty forty plan, so twenty years out.
Yeah, so they do require a ten-year update and then a five-year review.
Okay. So the ten-year update then could just be the midpoint of somebody that was doing a twenty-year plan?
Certainly.
We thank you and staff for, for your work on this. I um, I, 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 I think it is a um, a, a, a more important tool than, than many of, of those in our community understand sometimes. Uh, but I am appreciative of the folks that have participated in this process. It is, it is truly one of those bottom-up processes, and it is a way for the citizens to uh, to be heard and, and to be understood. And as that feedback comes from our citizens up through our consultants and our staff, it builds a cohesiveness that um, gives us um, both a, a strength to move forward with the plan, but also the faith and understanding to move forward with the plan. And as elected officials, serves for us to uh, to, to, to be firm in the fact that we uh, hope that we're on the right track as we move forward, uh, with this understanding. And so um, a, a critically important piece of what we do, both as a staff and as elected officials and as a community, to shape our community. And uh, having seen that growth take place over the last twenty years and how we've addressed it, I think we've done a really good job of, of doing that. And that doesn't mean that it hadn't been without hiccups or uh, or, or changes that need to be made. Uh, but I am proud of where we are and uh, proud of where we're going, and uh, think we've got lots of good opportunities to uh, to shape this community um, in a way that we have buy-in from, from top to bottom on, on that process. And uh, while there will uh, inevitably always be objections to uh, certain pieces and parts of it, this is truly one of those things where um, having a, uh, having a plan and, and a vision uh, serves us, serves us well, and we would be uh, well advised to uh, to understand that. And uh, while we may want to add things and we may want to take things away, over time, uh, this is uh, this is how we uh, direct our community and uh, and uh, we, we don't want to ever be in a position where uh, where we uh, we uh, stray far from, uh, far from this plan. So thank you for your work on it, and uh, thanks to our consultants as well too, and to, to our staff who have worked hard to put this together. Any other final thoughts? We thank you and uh, look forward to um, as we put this into action. Counsel, that comes to us tonight for action. I'll entertain a motion to uh, receive first reading of, I just pulled up the wrong agenda, of ordinance. When all else fails, go to the paper, copy. Sixty-three, twenty-twenty. I'll entertain a motion to receive sixty-three, twenty-twenty. Have a motion in a second. Floor is open for discussion. Hearing none. Ms. Duncan?
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Dumas?
Yes.
Mr. Bettis?
Yes.
Ms. Albert?
Yes.
Mayor Danner?
Yes.
Counsel? We have no further stated business. Meeting is adjourned.